Staff, are you inclined to, as they say at Torrey Pines, tee it up?
We are ready.
All right. Good evening, audience. Thursday, January 23rd, 2020, Planning Commission meeting. We are going to have a couple of items tonight. One is being dropped from the discussion tonight, number four, for more legal work. I think some of the lawyers have to be in DC right now. So it'll be interesting. Let's go. Call to order, please.
All commissioners are present this evening.
Good. Since you haven't been here in a while, you get to do the pledge. Pledge of allegiance, please. Everybody stand up, take our hat off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
All commissioners are present this evening.
Good. All right. At this time in the meeting, we have a three-minute speaking zone for public on any item not on the agenda and not about the 49ers beating the Packers. I don't see anybody coming up. Very good. Let's move on. Requests for continuances?
Mr. Chair, as you noted in your early remarks, item number four related to residential design standards, code, and LCP amendments, we're going to push this one off to February 20th. Again, we're doing some additional review of that, so we're not discussing item number four tonight.
All right. So if you're here for number four, you can sit around and watch and listen or hit the road until the 20th. Consent items. Item number one, minutes of November 21. Do we have some action on that?
Yeah, I was, I need to abstain, or I was absent on the November 21st meeting.
All right. And anybody else? Can I have an approval or an amendment to the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve that with the amended copy that we have in front of us from Mr. Mosher.
Do we have a second, please? I'll second that.
So Mr. Chair, we're just, Mr. Chair, we are just voting on the first item?
Yes, number one.
Okay.
November 21. We have a first and a second. All right, good. And we have an abstain as well. Very good.
The motion carries six zero with Commissioner Elmore abstaining.
All right. Item two, minutes of December 5th, 2019. Motion for approval or amendment?
I'll make that motion again with the modifications and amendments from Mr. Mosher.
Very good. I'll second that. Do we have any, anybody abstaining from that?
Yeah, I'll be abstaining from that. I was absent.
Okay, good.
The motion carries six zero with Commissioner Klostermeier abstaining.
All right. All right. Item number three tonight is a public hearing item for 24 Harbor Island. It's regarding a line wall variance, PA 2019 dash 059. It's, I already said 24 Harbor. It requires the variance, so we're going to have a public hearing on this. First, we're going to have a staff report, though. Staff?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. You are correct, this application is at 24 Harbor Island, and it's a variance for a wall along a side property line. So the request is actually, not just for the wall, it's actually to increase the height of the wall. The wall itself was approved in its current location at a lower height of 42 inches, so this application is solely to increase the height. That requires a variance and a coastal development permit since it's located in the coastal zone. The, the location of the wall is a side setback, but it's regulated as a front because it's identified on a setback map. This is the location of the project, so the subject property is outlined here in red. It looks vacant in this image because it's a little bit old. The house is currently under construction and it is nearing completion. The island is a private island. It's accessible only by this private bridge. It is gated. So a little bit of background on why this side setback area is regulated as a front. This is an image of the original track map, number 802. The blue box will show you the subject property. I just want to get you a little bit oriented. It shows us two lots here. The lots have been merged, so that's the subject property. And here is the private easement that's located on the property. So here we have an easement for a private walkway, and on the other side of the island, there is an easement for a private roadway. These were originally intended to be developed, but there's no plans to do that now. There are four total properties that are affected by this easement. It's number seven, eight, 26, and 24, which is the subject property. Number seven, eight, and 26 all have modifications or variances that have been approved historically to encroach into that setback area that was put in place because of the easement. On this map, you see all the setbacks on the island. The green shows the areas that are regulated as front setbacks for the purposes of accessory structures. So that's where you have those lower wall heights, those 42-inch wall heights. So once again, you see four properties that are affected by this extra front setback that goes along their side property line. They also have these areas regulated as front setbacks along the island. That's the private road, and then, of course, along the waterfront. This is what the wall actually is proposing. The red location is where the applicant proposes raising the height of the wall to six feet. As previously mentioned, there's no request to change the location of the wall. The location of this wall was approved in its current location in 2017 and is currently permitted, and it's just that it's at a maximum height of 42 inches because of that front setback area. It also was approved by the Coastal Commission, by Coastal Development Permit, in 2016. I also want to draw your attention to this area right here, so that you can see where the wall kind of jogs in. And this is an area that we'll kind of come back to a little bit later, but it could be used as a vehicle turnaround or for potentially parking. I have two photos that I'll show you of the site. This is actually standing in that side yard. You can see how there's a larger setback. And this construction fencing is right where the proposed wall would be located. This is looking towards the water, and I have another image here looking towards the island interior. So once again, you have this construction fencing, which is about the same height of the wall that they are proposing. So here are the variance findings. I know this is text-heavy. I just wanted to kind of mention that there are very specific findings that need to be made to support the approval of a variance. In this case, staff believes that these findings can be made and has included relevant conditions to help the commission potentially make those findings. Additionally, Title 21, which is the Local Coastal Program Implementation Plan, has additional considerations to consider when thinking about a variance, and those are detailed in the staff report. The project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15303, which is for new construction and conversion of small structures, in this case, an accessory structure, a wall that is accessory to a single-family dwelling. And staff recommends that the commission conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA, and adopt a resolution approving the Coastal Development Permit and variance. I also want to note that there was one letter received in support of the application from the next-door neighbor, and there was a second letter that was distributed as additional materials from the HOA. And the HOA is supportive of the application if an additional, if additional conditions of approval are added, excuse me. The, I believe the, the HOA may have a representative here, and I believe the applicant will also address that additional condition of approval. With that, the applicant is here, Shawna Schaffner of CAA Planning, and I can also answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on the staff report? All right. Introduce yourself, please. We're opening the public hearing.
Good evening, chair, heading members of the Planning Commission. I am Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning, and I represent the project applicant applicants in this variance request. I'd like to thank staff for their thorough presentation and their hard work on this project. We have reviewed the staff report, the findings of fact, and the conditions of approval, and we are in agreement with all of those. So here is the project site outlined in red. If you've had an opportunity to visit the site, you'll note that it looks a lot different than here, as the residence is nearly completed. This is a very straightforward variance application, and we have requested an increase in the height of an approved wall located within a side setback to be increased from three and a half feet to six feet. That is the extent of our variance application. There are no other changes requested. The variance is necessary, as Ms. Craigler explained, because the side of this property is considered a front yard, and a six-foot wall is not allowed in zoning code in the front yard. Only a three-and-a-half-foot wall would be allowed by right. As she noted, the property has three front yards. This includes the street-side front yard, the bay-side front yard, and in this particular location, the side front yard. The northwesterly side is a traditional side yard. So I'm going to give you a little bit of project history, and this is particularly because of the letter that we received two days ago from the community association. This project was approved by the community association in 2015. That approval letter is on the face of the plans. It recognizes that the wall locations were changed in a request that the association made, and by making those changes, the association was recommending approval. So that was in 2015. The city then issued an approval in concept. We made our way to the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission issued a CDP in 2017. The city quickly issued a building permit, and project construction commenced. At all of these approvals, the wall was in the same location, so there's been no change to the wall. Just want to make that very clear. And here you see in yellow the approved wall location at three and a half feet, and here's a little bit of a closer look. Now, this depicts the location of the approved three-and-a-half-foot wall compared to the side property line that you see in pink. The pink line reflects where the wall could be located based on the zoning code, and you'll note that the wall, the yellow line, is substantially set back in that front area nearest the street. And as I mentioned, this was done because of the HOA requesting that. As I've said, I mean, I don't have that much to cover. This is a very straightforward variance application. We are requesting that a segment of the wall increase in height from three and a half feet to six feet. Again, there's no change in the wall location, and there's no encroachment into the street-side front yard setback, and there's no encroachment into the bay-side front yard setback. And here we show in red the location of the wall. I'm going to show it a little closer so you can see it. This is, and then overlaid with the yellow. So the yellow represents the three-and-a-half-foot segment of the wall. The red represents the six-foot segment that's requested. So as I mentioned, in 2015, the association did review the, the plans and requested that a 50-foot segment be relocated into the property away from the property line. Once that revision was completed, the association approved the plan. And this is where the wall was originally proposed, you see in red, and it was moved into the property because of the association's requests, and the area in yellow was modified a little bit, too, with new low walls. And it went away. And here we are in the proposed condition. It's been relocated. Now, here are the plans. In the center of the plan, in the red box, is the association's approval letter. I have a copy if you'd like to see it, but essentially, in 2015, the association granted the approval, recognizing the change in location of the walls. So why is this, or why is this variance really necessary? And as Ms. Craigler got into, there is a historic easement here. It is 94 years old. There's a 30-foot private roadway easement between lots seven and eight. There's a 15-foot private walkway easement between lots 24 and 26. The bridge and pedestrian pier that these were intended to accommodate were never improved, and the association has said that these easements are virtually obsolete in their own writing to the city. So here at the top, we have lots seven and eight, and then at the bottom, you see lot 26. All three of these properties affected by the easement have existing variances or modification permits for encroachments of their residences. So each of these houses have been built into this front yard setback along the easement. In this case, we're not requesting that the house be built within the setback, but rather that a section of wall that's allowed in the setback be increased in height. And here is a 2014 letter from the association, underlined in red, saying these easements are largely obsolete. So this is information that we've relied on and that the city has relied on in granting prior approvals. This is a photograph of the area between lots seven and eight. Number seven encroaches 12 and a half feet into the setback. That is, the house encroaches 12 and a half feet. Number eight encroaches eight feet into the setback. They also have tall walls above three and a half feet that you can see meeting in the center at the property line. This is 26 Harbor Island. There is a five-foot encroachment at the first floor, a seven-foot encroachment at the second floor, and a roof overhang encroachment as well. This is the property that faces the wall, and this property owner has sent a letter of support to the city urging approval of this project. And then here we see some other walls in the area. It's very common to have these side yard walls right up to the street. And even beyond, we have some very large walls in this community. So this is a project that's consistent with the community character, very appropriate in scale, and is set back quite a bit from the street compared to many of these other large walls. So in summary, we're requesting your approval tonight. We have reviewed the letter from the community association, where they are appearing to rescind their approval from 2015, unless we agree not to park in the area next to the house. My client does not agree to that added condition. We think that that would have been something appropriate to advance in 2015 or starting this summer when we started our public outreach with them. It's unfortunate that they've waited until the last, you know, two days to reach out to us. I haven't been successful in trying to resolve this, and we regret that, but my client does not agree to the added parking condition. We think that's a private matter between the HOA and the residents and not a matter that the city needs to condition. We think that the variance findings have been met. We think they're well detailed in the staff report, and again, we urge that the commission approve this project tonight, and I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Hold on. Do we have any questions of the? Does anybody? Thank you. Let's, hang on a minute. Let's, let's make sure none of us have had any contact, or they did say what it was with the property owners. All right.
I'll start off. I had a telephone conversation with the applicant's representative.
I had some email correspondence with the applicant's consultant. No correspondence?
No. I toured the site with the general contractor. That's it.
I spoke with the applicant's consultant and toured the site with the general contractor.
None for me.
I talked with Ms. Schaffner on the phone, and we discussed the merits of the property and the wall and a few other discussions related to what she presented on tonight.
Okay. Questions of the applicant's consultant? I'm just curious, lot 26, house on 26, they have a covered parking space, then an open area. Okay.
This is the photograph of 26.
Yes, yes. On the left in the shade, that appears to be a covered parking, parking space, or could be.
It may be more narrow than it looks, but, but since you were there today, you might have a better impression than I do.
And then the, then the, outside of the columns appears to be an area where people could park.
Certainly.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you. Yes, Eric?
So by right, that, the proposal or the approved plans, by right, you could have parking there if you kept it at three and a half, or however many feet that is?
That's correct. Based on the approved configuration at three and a half feet, it would accommodate vehicle parking.
So without any asking of that wall, and say it were just approved that way, people can park there at any point?
Correct.
Thanks.
Question, Kurt?
Quick question. On the, the easement, I know it's an old 94 years, but is the grantee, is it the Harbor Island Community Association? Is that who's the beneficiary of that? It just?
The, the easement is so old, it is only described on the face of the track map as private roadway easement and private walkway easement.
But it's private, so it's not recorded or anything?
That's, it's not recorded. That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
A question for you. So the wall is up to a higher limitation, but there's a jog that goes across. Is that, is that going to be a gate in the front, or is that going to be, is that going to be a wall as well?
Yeah. Chelsea, are you able to hit page 10, please? So starting at the street, it is the, the low wall. About 26 feet from the street, it transitions with a pilaster to a six-foot wall. 50 feet back, you see the, the double gates opening into the side yard.
And what's the height of the gates?
Similarly, I think it's six feet. That was the application was six feet.
Okay.
Would you have a blow-up of this?
This might show it a little better.
Better. Okay. So that 90-degree and 90, that's where the double gates are, I was told, and the plans showed, and we're speaking of that area out to Harbor Island Drive, or whatever they call it?
Is, if, if you might turn around, are you talking about the area closest to the street that I've got the laser pointer on? Oh, there's, Chelsea's got her mouse.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
That was blue on one of our graphics. Okay. That's the area that the HOA is concerned about?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Not the wall height, nothing of that?
Correct. Simply the location that they, if, if parking is not restricted here, as I understand their letter, then they don't agree to anything in, in this location.
All right. So where that 90-degree jog is, that could go all the way out, couldn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Questions down on my left? Ms. Kleinman? Come in, please.
So backing up just a little, I guess I'm sort of taking issue with how this came about and the sequence. Obviously, this has been in the works for quite some time, and they're almost done with construction, so I'm troubled with the way that we've arrived to this point today. It seems almost like they went through coastal with the path of least resistance, just to come back and expect it, you know, to be sort of a check-the-box approval here. I also am curious to hear from staff. I know at some point, we didn't have the ability to do this with our LCP. I assume that that has since changed. Are we confident that this is something that we can do with that mechanism?
Yes, we are confident that we can act on this coastal development permit, and we can approve a variance. That was a recent amendment by the Coastal Commission, so we have added findings and considerations that are addressed in your staff report and in the resolution. As Chelsea stated, we, we believe facts are in support of those findings.
Okay, yeah, I assume that from the, the staff report, but I remember at some point we did not have the ability to approve a variance of the LCP. So if you could address the other part of the question of why we're almost done building this?
Yes. My involvement in this project has been limited to, in 2018, I was engaged to work with the Coastal Committee, or, excuse me, in 2016, I was engaged to work with the Coastal Commission to complete the CDP application, which had already been filed by the architect. They had run into substantial trouble with staff and couldn't work out certain issues within state titlenes and other things, and so I was engaged at that point. I was not party to the 2015 discussions with the association or anything related to the design. So my involvement was, was limited. I was approached once, the LCP was updated to include the variance procedures, to find out whether this was an application that could be submitted to the city. So I think that my client, in following along with the city's process and getting a certified LCP, which happened as we were processing the original CDP application, and then finding out the variances could be approved by the city, became interested in pursuing this, together with his neighbor's support. It's my understanding that 26 recently changed hands, so there's a somewhat new property owner there, who's, as evidenced by his letter from August, is very supportive of the project, and they decided that this would be an appropriate application to advance, given the city's newfound authority. So that's, that's been my history here. I also think that of the 30 residential units on Harbor Island, you know, all but these four have two side yards each, and they, by right, can build a six-foot wall, and that's a reasonable expectation for privacy along one side yard. And so where this doesn't encroach in a manner that would affect views or coastal access, this, you know, limited segment of a six-foot wall seems appropriate, given the prevailing development, which is fences and/or very large gates at the property line. In this case, we're, we're talking, you know, setback from the property line, and that's not consistent really with the prevailing development, which is right up to the street, to have these tall gates.
Sure. No, I appreciate that complete response. I don't know if the applicant is actually here, but at some point, I just would like to get a little more color on it. It just seems a little curious. I'm sure they spent so much time, especially with the HOA, to, to make this change, and obviously on their plans, they've been, they've been working on this for, for a long time, so it just leaves me wondering why they would make such a big oversight. I'm guessing it didn't just occur to them one morning that they wanted the wall to be higher.
Yeah. I, I think it's because, as I've said, they became aware that a variance could be submitted and considered by the city. And given that the other three properties in this same condition, that is, the historic easement, have variances and/or encroachments that are approved, they felt that there was good support for this.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, please.
I'm curious, if, if, if parking is restricted in this portion of the easement, are there any restrictions with the HOA along Harbor Island that restrict residents from parking along that street?
I couldn't speak to any particular parking restrictions. In my visits to the property, I've seen cars parked, you know, very close in front of properties. There don't, there doesn't seem to be a lot of parking available, and so I think that it's, it's my client's impression that any parking that could be provided is a positive thing, so that it's not in front of one's driveway, which is where one normally sees it on this private road.
Does staff know, are there red curbs out there that prevent people from parking on the street for fire access, or?
Not that, not that I noticed in this, in the site visit.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and I could clarify, there are no curbs, so there are no red curbs.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Eric?
So let's say both scenarios exist. The, the, the three-and-a-half-foot wall that's right by the parking stays the same, and the owner or applicant chooses to park there, or a six-foot wall gets built and the owner gets to park there. Could the HOA, some point down the road, as a private matter, restrict the parking there, or is that a city after we've approved it? after we've approved it, or, you know, if they've agreed to the three-foot wall, is that a city matter, or is that a matter of a private?
I would say this is a private matter, it's private property, Harbor Island, the road is a private street, but this is on the applicant's property, this is not even on the street, it's not even on the private street. So this is well within the applicant's property, so this is certainly a private matter between the association and the applicant.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we have another comment, down my left.
It's more of a clarification, but it appears that the Community Association is saying the same thing, and that is that this is not a vehicular easement in this particular area, this is a pedestrian easement. The vehicular easement is on the northern side between lots seven and eight. So, something to consider when we talk about parking and what the HOA is asking.
If I might address that comment, I think that the association has said that they want it for vehicular access. So, yeah, I think, Ms. Rosin, I'm not sure if your comment is that because it's a walkway, one shouldn't park there, but certainly, I would say because it's a private walkway easement, one shouldn't restrict, you know, whether or not one can turn around or park, or anything else.
Yeah, I think we'd all, if there is a representative from the HOA, I think we would probably all benefit from hearing from that individual, but...
And yes, there is.
Okay, so, you know, we don't have the CCNRs, I don't know if there's something that speaks to that, but it's a little bit unique. Normally, I would agree, it would be between the HOA, and they would go through that process, as you said, they've already been through that process of getting their approval, but in this case, it's, it is unique because it's a private island, and it's not just a matter of, you know, decorative elements or architectural review, in this case, it's, you know, the access, the passageways are narrow, and it's it's not the easiest place to navigate through, so I think it's important to hear from them and to understand what the reasoning is behind that, and I think those of us who visited the site could see that it does present particular issues or difficulties for, you know, deliveries and other things that go on throughout the day or week. So I think we'd like to kind of understand that a little bit better.
Ms. Chair, one more, sorry, I keep bouncing around this, but the photo two on page 53, both seven and eight do have parking, correct, in a similar manner that 24 will be asking for?
So you're referring to a photograph that was included in my application, which shows a fenced off or gated off area, is that correct? And that's between seven and eight, I believe that that chain has been removed, I'm going to get to that in a second. Yep, and as we see, a vehicle is parked there, in that, of course, that's a 30-foot wide easement, roadway easement, it's much bigger than the area in question. And again, I think the important thing is that a wall could be built, three and a half foot wall, all the way up to the property line, where a 50-foot, you know, area has been carved out at the association's prior request, so it's a little different situation here.
Gotcha, okay, thanks.
All right, with that, we'd like to hear from the public on this, please state your name, fill out a card if you're going to speak.
Chair Kettig, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. Slightly different tangent from Commissioner Kleiman's comment, we heard at the beginning of both presentations that the wall had already been approved by the Coastal Commission in 2017 at a lower height. I'm not quite sure how they had the authority to do that after our LCP had been certified, if they did it after January. However, this, in my mind, I'm having a little trouble connecting with what we've heard about a application that is in the pipeline for a hotel at the Newport Dunes. The public has been told there that because the Coastal Commission approved a CDP for a hotel many years ago, that they would now be the agency that would have to approve any changes to the CDP. Maybe that was misinformation, but I'm trying to understand how now this body can modify a permit that was approved by a different body, if that's different than the case at the Newport Dunes. However that may be, I think it's interesting to look at the tract map from 1926, which is on page 43 of your handout. If you look at that, you'll see that the Harbor Island was laid out, much like Balboa Island 16 or 17 years before, with a pedestrian walkway all around the outside of the island. And these two roadways in the middle of the island were intended to connect to the walkway, so you could get in the walkway at the end of the main road, at the east or the west, or in the middle of the island through these two passageways. So visitors to the island could stroll around the entire perimeter of the island, or a quarter of the island if they felt like doing that. Seems like a beautiful design, very thoughtful, nobody has mentioned what happened to the pedestrian easement that was supposed to be at the end of this pedestrian walkway. We've actually been told that the 30-foot roadway never was developed, but I've heard from a resident who's lived on the island almost from the beginning, that actually there was a bridge there at the beginning, so that roadway did work, but apparently the board of the Community Association somehow has some mysterious right, and like Commissioner Delaurie, I'm not quite sure where that comes from, to redraw the map and say, well, we don't need a pedestrian walkway around the island, and maybe we don't need these passageways after all, or maybe we do. Looking at the map, I would also point out that the private property lines extend to the center of the island, so they actually go down the middle of the main access 30-foot roadway. And I'm not sure even Ms. Chaffner would claim that all the property owners, by right, can build a three and a half foot wall in the middle of the main roadway down the center of the island if they felt like doing so, that's another front thing. So I have some confusions about those, I often am confused. I'm also a little confused why the fundamental problem is the setback map, of which there's actually two, there's one in the zoning code, one in the coastal plan. If those are now defective and incomplete, why are we not amending the setback plan or maps, rather than going for a variance? That would seem like a more straightforward and more permanent approach, rather than having bad maps from which we make variances. And then finally, as to the variances, variances are usually supposed to be, in special circumstances, difficult to obtain. The staff and the applicant have made these variances incredibly easy to get, because if you read the logic of it, they start with the premise that everybody is entitled to a six-foot wall on their property line, and starting from your conclusion, it's very easy to make all the findings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. I don't see anybody racing to the finish line here, so we will close the, well... I beg your pardon to speak to the mic, so we can get it all down, you can be in the history book.
Of course, thank you, sir. My name is Jerry, I'm with Total Property Management, unfortunately, the Board of Directors for Harbor Island Community Association, they were not available tonight, sent me, for better or worse, I came prepared to support and the letter that was recently issued by the board per their meeting on Tuesday. I understand now that there's maybe some disagreement as to some understanding that occurred at a meeting on site. Unfortunately, I wasn't present, so I can't speak to that conversation, et cetera. What I can say on behalf of the association is the letter that was presented to you all, the height of the wall is not a challenge for the board, as I hope that is immensely clear. It is the the board has concerns on either side, seven, eight, 24, excuse me, 25, 26, we recently had a challenge, maybe about four or five months ago, where, wherein a resident, longtime resident, had a health challenge, an emergency vehicle was called, and it appeared, there seemed to be some delay in service because of, and if most of you have been to Harbor Island, you'll know that that roadway is, it's very hard to navigate due to its narrowness. It has inherent challenges, particularly when you've got a large vehicle such as a fire truck, et cetera. So the board is grappling with this concern both, on both sides. This letter goes to not, that they're not willing to support the owner and its endeavor. However, first and foremost, has to be a concern relative to emergency vehicles and ingress egress. And that's the primary concern that was intended to be expressed in this communication dated January 21, 2020.
So what you're saying is, they don't want anybody to park there, for what reason?
So the radius, if you did the math and you look at it concretely, you would know that if cars, vehicles are allowed to park there, and again, this is not, again, something that is, we're focusing on 25, 26, seven and eight is an ongoing matter as well. We don't believe that the radius would effectively assist in a capable or efficient emergency situation if necessary, so that's the reason for the parking request, the no parking request.
Apparently, it's worked since 1926. I've never heard of this before, and then I was on this commission when we did the one across the street. Okay, seven and eight, and that was never discussed at that point. So I think in, in my opinion, an emergency vehicle will turn around wherever they have to. You know, it'll go on your front lawn if they have to, and they just turn around and get out. So I, that's why I was asking why they permanently would not want parking in that, what I call the blue area on the map, when maybe the first eight feet of it would work if you're going to do a, pull in and back out and leave. That's at least 20, that's at least 30 feet back, so I'm concerned about that. Thank you, Commissioners, questions of the... Yes, Eric?
So the letter that's on here, it basically says that you're asking a condition that owners lots 24 and 26, and in another part, it says if owners of lots 24 and 26 refuse to accept, 26 doesn't have to refuse anything, it's, they've already got it, right? Staff, I mean, you can't come in and, we're not changing somebody else's, this is not, we're not discussing their property, so...
Precisely, yeah, 26 isn't here today, so...
Yeah, but that's not, that's not on our discussion front, so, I mean, we're asking us to approve conditions or change conditions that affect another property owner, so I don't, I don't think we should be considering that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, my original question about access for emergency vehicles seems to be a point that's now being brought up, and I'm a little bit confused whether it's the width of the road, or if it's a situation where you need to have an emergency vehicle that's turning around in like a hammerhead type situation, you know, where they back in and need to turn around. To me, it seems like there's not a condition where you can turn a vehicle around at the end of the private street right now. So it seems to me that you would actually want cars off of the street to not block access for vehicles coming in, I don't know if I have that backwards. I'm a little, I'm also a little confused why there aren't members from the HOA that brought this up to begin with that aren't present tonight.
I'm not sure quite how to answer, other than, you know, as you may or may not know, you know, there's Boards of Directors shift and change, et cetera, so the communication that was referenced, I think dated October 14, 2015, was presented and provided to the owner. I think with events, recent events that have been presented to the board, it has an immense concern relative to, again, the emergency vehicle situation, you are correct, driving into Harbor Island, a large dump truck or a fire truck, it would, it's a long, difficult process to go in to the very end of Harbor Island and then create a path to then egress. So it's not necessarily, it isn't the parking on the street, per se, it is the way to shift pivot to get out, and we believe that this area, as well as the seven, eight area, is the way to be able to do that, and we have concern that cars parked there would prevent sake of ease on that issue.
Ms. Rosin?
This is more of a recommendation, and it doesn't have anything to do with the variances before us, but this map, 802, could easily be modified. What's interesting to me, these are private streets, it's clearly a private matter. This map has, as Mr. Mosher pointed out, a five pedestrian walkway around the entire area. I'm pretty sure that these are very private people and would never want to see that. As is this private roadway where we have encumbrances on an easement area that should be of concern to someone if they owned that property from a title perspective. So it's just a recommendation, you should probably clean up the map and make a map revision of some sort, and make it match the existing conditions at some future point in time.
Thank you.
Yes.
So a couple of things. I think whether or not this is a private matter, I'm not exactly sure, but I do think it's a public safety issue, that I'm sort of surprised the, you know, the city, I know you always have fire, look at these plans, and if they didn't take issue with it, can, or is it safe to assume that they didn't think that there was an issue with response time?
That's correct, the location of the wall was approved by all city departments at the lower 42-inch height. In the exact same location.
But I think we can all agree that the height of the wall has nothing to do with vehicle access, or turnaround time, or... So they must feel that the response time onto the island at this, when the plans were approved, is sufficient?
Yes.
Okay, so then what you said is extremely relevant, which is that the HOA is taking issue with something that has nothing to do with what we're here tonight to discuss. They have a public safety or a community safety concern, but they're not taking issue with the height of the wall, which is all we are here to look at tonight. So our hands are tied, and, you know, they're going to have to find a different pathway to address that issue. Whether they want to go back and talk to, you know, fire and police to decide if this is something that does affect their response time, that's up to them, or however they choose to address it. However, we're here to look at this variance, and the height of the wall is the only thing...
Understood, I would agree with that assessment, may I ask, is there a report that, maybe it is in this packet, that that ostensibly provides reporting by the fire department that the the encroachment or the change here that's being requested would not, in their minds, directly affect ingress egress?
You know, Ms. Chair, maybe I can provide an answer here, you know, the fire department didn't look at this project specifically for response times. The fire department has, they go anywhere, right, and we have an excellent fire department. The congestion here is no different than the congestion of Balboa Island, the peninsula, Coron del Mar, it's, you know, we have it throughout, and they've, they make do. The document that you're asking for, the fire department didn't review this specifically for response times. They had an opportunity to comment, they had no issues with the wall, the variance, that's pretty much it, that's all the document says. If the, if the applicant, I'm sorry, the HOA has any concerns with response times, I believe it's appropriate for you to have that separate meeting, either with a fire marshal or the fire chief, and have that discussion, to talk that through with regards to response times, and what's their standard operating procedures. But right now, we don't have any further documents that say there's no issues on response times, so it's just strictly looking at the variance of the wall.
Thank you, and we veered far, far, far from the item at hand here, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm looking for anybody else in the audience, seeing none?
Chair, before you close the public hearing, I just have one more question about parking since, I guess the applicant's consultant or the applicant.
I was going to call them back up.
About the allowance for parking onsite. I mean, this is a double lot. It's a massive space. I'm sure they've provided for parking for their own vehicles, but again, just out of curiosity, having nothing really directly to do with what we're here to decide at this point, but I'm just curious if they've allotted for that because we weren't provided detailed plans.
Sure. So if I might address the Commissioner, Sean Schaffner, again, for the applicant. There is a three-car garage onsite. There's also a golf course, or golf cart, excuse me, garage onsite. Typically, in these properties, the garages, oh, I think, there we go. The garages are built right up to the front setback of the street. This particular garage is built setback from the street a little bit, which would accommodate some parallel parking of guest vehicles. And then also, this area that we've been talking about would also accommodate guest vehicles off of the street. The, you know, the private drive, it's a single loaded street when one goes across the bridge onto the island. That is probably the biggest choke point, is trying to navigate one lane. Once you get onto the island, the private street is a little bit bigger, even with cars parked in front of garages, there's enough room. This has been planned to allow for, you know, within the property, cars to be accommodated.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to close the hearing now. And any questions of staff or the chair? If not, I'll look for motions. We're here on a variance for a wall. Let's go.
How about I'll put it out here, I'll make a recommendation to approve item, agenda item number three and all three recommendations listed. That's second.
Go ahead. Beg your pardon? Mr. Rosin, I didn't see you. Oh, you seconded, fine. All right. And that, conditions of approval, that's considered, there's only one condition, actually. And the findings, all right. So let's vote on this.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you for coming in. Item number four, residential design standard code and LCP amendments. We already heard from Mr. Campbell that that is being postponed till the 20th of the month, of next month. Today's the 22nd or 3rd. All right. Now we are on item number five, accessory dwelling units SB 330, Housing Crisis Act of 2019. By the way, is that our city staff's term or is that coming down from Sacramento? The crisis word?
So the crisis word is coming from Sacramento.
It does?
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Tonight, I'm here to update you a little bit about some of the new state laws regarding housing and how they could impact the city of Newport Beach. Last year, the state of California adopted some new legislations and they declared that there was a statewide housing crisis. Now, this crisis, as dictated by the state legislator, goes into 2025. In total, the state last year did adopt 18 new laws that impact housing and how we approve housing on those. The four most important ones that I'll be discussing tonight include SB 330, and this did establish the Housing Crisis Act. It also amended the Permit Streamlining Act and amended the Housing Accountability Act. It really dictates how we can approve housing projects.
Excuse me, real quick, I missed, tell us your name and your responsibility.
My apologies about that. My name is David Blumenthal. I am a consultant with Sagecrest Planning and Environmental. I am here helping out the city with some staffing needs.
Very good.
Beyond SB 330, then, the state also adopted three new laws, SB 13, AB 68, and AB 881, which all affects the accessory dwelling units and how those will be regulated through that. Of that, AB 881 was the last one signed by the governor that does take precedence and is the one that we're going to be kind of focusing on a lot tonight in our discussion. Let me start off with SB 330. Now, SB 330 applies to all housing development projects only. And the way the state defines a housing development project is if it's residential units only, if it's a mixed-use project, but at least two-thirds of that floor area is residential uses, or if it's supportive, transitional, or emergency housing. Now, SB 330 did go into effect on January 1st of this year and will sunset out on January 1st of 2025. So unless the state extends it, the rules that are within SB 330 won't apply anymore. Now, what SB 330 did is it created a new process. It's a preliminary application process. This allows developers to come in, submit to the city some information about what they're proposing as far as housing goes, give us some preliminary information. Once that preliminary application process is complete, that then locks in their development standards and regulations and fees at the time that they submitted that completed application. It also limits the city to no more than five public hearings for concerning housing developments. Now, the trick here on this is that that includes any workshops, study sessions on that housing, anything that is Sequo related, all that does count towards those five public hearings. The SB 330 also did some changes, as I said, to the Permit Streamlining Act, but that reduced some of the processing times that the city has to act on the applications. And it also stated that we can only apply written objective standards to housing projects. Example of this, like I have on the screen, you know, subjective standards saying that the roof pitch must match or be consistent with the area. We have to be more specific and say roof pitch must be at least a 3 to 12 slope. Those are the type of objective standards we're going to have to be looking at. Now, SB 330 also puts new limitations and says that you can't deny a housing project that complies with your zoning and your general plan. There are specific findings in SB 330 that you can make to deny a project, but they're very limited in scope. It prohibits the use of new growth control measures and moratoriums on housing. And it locked in your density and intensities of your general plan and your zoning to January 1st, 2018, so you cannot lower the densities allowed within the general plan or the zoning. Also, downzoning has been prohibited, and this basically means that you can't take a property that's zoned R2 and rezone it to R1. You can always go up, you can never go back down. The good news here is that Sequo still applies, so we can still mitigate impacts, and the Coastal Act still applies, so we can still apply the provisions of the Coastal Act and make sure we're protecting those resources. Now, the item here I haven't yet read on the PowerPoint, this is kind of a critical point and probably one of the most difficult things that we have to deal with on this law. The state, for the first time that I'm aware of, has said, property owners, we're not only going to regulate the cities what they can do, but we're going to tell you as a property owner that you can't reduce the number of homes on your property. So if you have three houses on your property right now or three units, you must maintain those three units. If you want to demolish them, you have to rebuild all three units. It also has a lot of provisions for protecting the affordable units on the property, and it does require the city to go back at least five years, as far as those number of units and as far as the protected units, though. So someone can't come in today and demolish their duplex, come back next week and apply for a single-family home. And this is an actual real-world example for you. This is on Oceanfront Boulevard, 2600. Back in 2013, there were two units on that property. The city approved a map to combine those two properties, tear them down, and build a single-family home on that. Under SB 330, this is actually now prohibited by the state.
Okay, if I ask a quick question?
Sure.
How does that apply to a lot merger?
The same exact thing, is if it's going to reduce the number of units that were there, that would be prohibited.
Okay, thank you.
Let's let the presentation run its course, then we can ask questions, so we get you to the point, because we, there's quite a few of them coming.
Absolutely. The slide that you're seeing right now, just to make things really clear and show you how complicated it is, this is our workflow to get through a housing project. This is the actual process someone needs to go through to get a housing project approved. So this was developed in order to help staff and help the public understand what they need to do. Okay, I'd like to move on to the new ADU laws now. So the new ADU laws went into effect on January 1st of this year as well. As I previously noted, there were three of them. 881, and that's AB 881, affected the ADUs themselves. That was the last one that signed, was signed by the governor. AB 68, the only portion of that law that's still effective affects junior accessory dwelling units. And then SB 13, the only portion of that law that is still effective is addressing how the city can go after, or it's actually for violations of building code for ADUs specifically, and I'll go into more details on what that means. One of the things that AB 881 did do, and this was a change from the state's previous stance, is they now said that if any portion of the city's ordinances don't comply with the new state ADU laws, it voids your entire ADU ordinance, and you have to default to the minimal standards under the state regulations. So that's kind of where we're at today, is if someone came in with an ADU, it would go to those minimal state standards. Now, we are working on the code amendment to bring the ADU laws into compliance, and we're anticipating that to be before you believe next month. So ADUs versus junior accessory dwelling units, there's a little bit of a difference here. I wanted to touch base on that, just so everybody was able to understand. This is an example of an accessory dwelling unit. They're allowed, under the new laws, in all zones, I allow residential, including mixed-use zones. They can now go up to 800 square feet if they're a single bedroom, 1,000 square feet for two bedrooms. You can build a new one or you can convert existing space. Previously, the cities were allowed to require owner occupancy in one of the units on the site, either the primary or the ADU. The new law does state that that's waived until January 1st, 2025. And the state did preserve the right for the city to prohibit them being sold separately, so we can, we did look at no conveyance measures. Now, a junior accessory unit is, much like in a full accessory unit, it's a little bit smaller. It's only going to be allowed in the single-family zones. It has a maximum of 500 square feet. You cannot build new, this is conversion of existing space. The owner occupancy requirements still do apply. They are allowed to have internal connection between the primary dwelling and the junior accessory dwelling unit, and they can actually share the sanitation, the bathrooms between the two units, so the junior accessory does not have to have its own bathroom. It does require, though, to have its own kitchen. So quickly, what we're seeing as the upcoming changes needed to the city's regulations in order to comply with the state laws, we do have to allow them in all residential zones. The number of units right now, you only allow 1 ADU. The new rules will be on single families, you could go on 1 ADU plus 1 JADU in certain circumstances. For multiple family, you can build ADUs up to 25% of the existing units on the property. So if you have a 20-unit apartment complex, they can add 5 ADUs in that case. Your minimum lot size currently is 5,000 square feet. The state does mandate no more minimum lot sizes. As I talked about, the size of the units went from 750 square feet for accessory dwelling units up to 1,000. The JADUs are capped at 500 square feet. The height for detached structures went from 14 feet, it's going to 16 feet. Setbacks, it's really going to be the same thing as the base zones are going to be allowed, except if it's a detached unit in the rear property, they're allowed a four-foot side and rear setback if they're detached. As I noted, for accessory dwelling units, the owner occupancy requirement has been suspended till January 1st, 2025. Garage conversions, you currently do allow garage conversions in your code right now. The city does require that you replace your parking in some manner on the same property. The state's saying no more requirements for replacement parking. And parking, under the current codes, right now, your one parking space per unit, this actually stays the same for the ADUs, you keep one parking space. You have five points that you're allowed to not require parking, and these five points stay the same. So it's within a half-mile walking distance of transit, within a block of ride share, if it's in a historical district, if the property is conversion of an existing enclosed area already, or if it's on a street that requires on-street parking permit, and that parking permit won't be required, won't be provided to the occupant of the accessory dwelling unit. Now, what the state did do in this case here, and this was one of the, like a better term, struggle cities had with the last go-around of ADU updates, was the half-mile of transit stops. The state did clarify what a transit stop is. They did clarify it is a fixed route, bus, train, or subway. In Newport's case, that's going to only apply to buses. And they clarified, instead of a half-mile radius, it is a half-mile walking distance. So here's your transit stops. These are your bus stops here in Newport here. When we apply half-mile radius to that, you can see, this is going to cover most of the city that the ADUs will not require parking. But caution, this is a radius. This is not the walking distance. What will happen when someone comes in and apply for an ADU, we're going to ask to see that it's a half-mile walking distance. They will give us an example, just like what you see before you, which is, and this is what's done using Google Maps, it was simple to locate the transit stop and then just plug in the address and get that half-mile walking distance. In this case, it was .2 miles. Now, when I talked about SB 13, I wanted to touch base a little bit on this. This is kind of a unique thing for us to. What SB 13 is saying is an owner can request a five-year delay on enforcement of building code violations against an ADU. Now, this means that if, and this means that if someone comes in and they have like an illegally built ADU, they can ask for a delay of enforcement, gives them time to be able to pull permit, get it all legally done. It does only apply to accessory dwelling units, it does not apply to the junior accessory dwelling units, and it only applies to building standards only. Now, in order to get this waiver, they will need to apply for it, a request from the city. SB 13 does specify the city has to approve the waiver unless the fire marshal determines the correction is necessary to protect the health and safety. So ultimately, it's the fire marshal that makes that determination, that there has to be a health and safety correction. If not, then they'll get their five-year extension. This new provision did go into effect January 1st, 2020 as well, and it does not sunset until January 1st, 2035. So this one here is a little bit longer term than the, some of the other stuff we've seen tonight. Now, with that, that will conclude my presentation. Is this available to answer any questions you may have on these?
All right. It's a lot, quite a bit to absorb.
Absolutely.
I'm going to start with a few questions, get the ball rolling. Explain the 2025 in effect until?
So for SB 30, I'm sorry, SB 330, the regulations are written that they sunset, so they expire on January 1st, 2025. It goes back to the current rules.
Okay. I'm under the impression, listening to the staff a week ago Tuesday at council, we have until October 31st of this year to lay out our plan for 832 units in the city.
Yes, next year.
Just overlay, right?
Yeah, so that rule is for your regional housing needs to accommodate this. These rules here will be in addition to that.
Okay. My next one is five public hearings maximum. Explain how that would work if somebody came in and said, I want to build four units, and it's zoned.
Yes.
They have a hearing? They have Sequo?
Yes. You would have your. You would have your CEQA scoping meeting typically, you might have a public hearing here before the planning commission, gets appealed before the council, there's your three of them, you still have a play of two more. If your meeting got continued, then you might have, you know, two meetings before the planning commission, but that does all add up. On larger projects, you could even have a workshop, that would count.
But that's different than I heard the other night, staff, and you can answer this if you want. It almost sounded like this is a free walk. If it's overlaid for housing and affordable, you just come in. You avoid CEQA, you avoid coastal, you avoid this body. Am I mistaken?
I think chair Ketting, members of the commission, you'll want to summer hill with the city attorney's office.
A little louder, please.
I think that is contemplating a scenario where discretionary approvals are required. So in other words, if discretionary approvals are required, then we would be limited to the five public hearings. If we're talking about an application that's just permitted by right, then in that circumstance, there would be no hearings required. One other thing I wanted to add on the public hearings, I mean, I think that there is some benefit with a lot of applicants to have more hearings. For instance, you know, I've seen some study sessions where applicants have submitted applications and wanted to get input, and so I'm still of the mind that we, if we have an applicant that is amenable to more than five, then, you know, we could agree to that in writing. But for the most part, it does constrain our ability to kind of drag things out, if you will, under the law.
Then, my last one for the moment is HOAs in a planned community could say, "We don't, we're not going to allow any, you know, ADUs." Now, that's wiped off, and you can walk right in and build a house, a little unit on the front lawn?
Absolutely. The, there was another law that...
Two-part question, absolutely.
So let me, I apologize. There is another law that the state came in and told HOAs that any restrictions, covenants prohibiting ADUs is no longer valid, and that they have to approve them with reasonable restrictions. So they still have their architectural control, but they have to approve them.
Okay. And last, I said I wouldn't, but coastal commission conflicts with the state mandate? If we went back, the city went back and said, "Hey, this property was denied, they're going to put on, you know, 800 units." Does the state then tell the coastal commission, step aside, you have to approve it?
No, the coastal act still applies.
Until the housing department, Sacramento, has to go across the hall and say, "Lighten up?"
We're hoping that that happens from the governor's office, yes?
Okay. I'll be quiet now, let the commissioners throw out some. Anybody? Eric?
I think our mayor sent out a nice letter on SB 50, which is a very, you know, interesting bill that's being proposed in Sacramento relating to the next round of these housing-type bills that have passed. You'll see another presentation very similar to this coming down from the state. So I think our mayor and our council are on top of a lot of these issues in getting our communities' input and making sure that we're protected in certain fronts. But I do want to just make sure that the public is beyond these, and I think this is great that staff or chair Ketting put this on the agenda, because people can watch this on TV or watch this through a live stream, but a lot don't. So I'm just hopeful that the city can put out a cheat sheet or some information in the mail, or it goes on our water bills, or wherever it goes to, that we can get this info to our residents. Maybe not to encourage them to go overboard on some of these new laws, but at least to know when they come forth to us, and we're saying, "Our hands are tied, we have to greenlight this type of stuff." And the community's out with pitchforks demanding that we all get thrown off and the city gets, council gets recalled. I just want to make sure that the residents do know that we can't do anything beyond that. So I think it's helpful that this, the city puts out important information. So those are really my only comments. And then as far as the public hearings, the five of them, you know, there have been times where we've, up here, have had discussions where we want an item continued. So, you know, what happens if you're bordering that threshold, like we're on four, staff will say, or three, well, staff will come in and say, "You guys can't continue," because it will prevent council from having their ability to continue the item if it gets to them. So I'm just, that is very interesting how that dynamic will work, and I'm sure we'll approach that as a subject that the attorneys will have to go through. But I think sometimes here, we've continued items once, maybe even twice, I don't know, three times, but that's something I guess we'll have to approach when we get to that. But those are just my only comments.
You know, our city is very lucky to have a commission with at least three and possibly four developers sitting up here that work in housing. So they're going to have a great deal of influence talking about this and understanding this process nationally especially. So continue to ask questions.
I'm just curious with the RENA numbers that the city is receiving from the state. Do the ADUs count towards that, or is that a separate category?
State law does allow for HCD to consider ADUs to count towards jurisdictions, RENA requirements. However, it's very subjective right now, the way the state law's written, and there is an example in state law that says cities can rely on past production to determine how many ADUs could count towards future RENA. But that's not really fair, given that in the past, we've always prohibited ADUs, and now that state law's changed to where we really have no say or no control over ADUs. That needs to change. HCD is working on a memo to explain how ADUs will count towards RENA. They have not released that yet. However, the city as well is requesting assistance from our assembly members and senators to pass a bill to provide, or to amend the law to make it very clear in state law how RENA, or how ADUs would count towards RENA by applying very objective standards that HCD staff would have to abide by. So that's something we're working on now.
Thank you.
Is that it? I have another one. Garage conversions to an ADU require a billing permit?
Yes.
No parking additional?
No additional parking required.
So if the house has a two-car garage and they build out the third, you know, some places have a small garage that they fill it up with stuff, and they convert that to a bathroom, kitchen, kitchenette, and living, they don't have to provide parking for that? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Go ahead, Curtis.
We have a green light initiative in the city. Does that, is the state law going to supersede that, and does it open up the city of Newport Beach to lawsuits because we're not following the initiative? How does that work?
SB 330, the green light initiative would still apply in spite of SB 330 for those cities that have adopted a similar green light initiative, I think, post 2005, then it comes into question, but in this case, it would still apply.
All right. I noticed a couple graphics we didn't have in our packet, number 12 and number 13, which would have been helpful if we can get those. And I'd recommend, like, commissioners to pull this out of your book and hang on to it, because you're going to be asked by a lot of people, "What's this all about?" Alfie. All right. Staff, do we need to kick this around anymore, open it up to the community, or?
I think go ahead and take public comments if there are any.
Jim, would you like to have a comment, or just one, please?
Chair Ketting and members of the commission, my name is Jim Moser. First of all, in addition to having a green light measure, Newport Beach, as we all know, is a charter city, and state housing laws don't automatically apply to charter cities. The state legislature has to declare that they do, and that's just their declaration. That declaration can be canceled, can be challenged in court if the law, and the law can be declared not to apply to a charter city, if it's not narrowly tailored to the statewide interest that the legislature claims it has. So I'm wondering the extent to which we are monitoring whether any other charter cities in California are challenging these mandates and what the status of those challenges might be. I would hope that we were. I also was startled by the garage conversion rule here that says not only that you don't need parking for the ADU, but apparently the parking requirement for the house disappears. So there is no requirement for parking at all for residents if you decide you would like the garage to be an ADU instead. Sounds very strange to me. And also strange to me, and I'm still not quite understanding, is this five-meeting rule? And if a developer carefully arranged things so that the meeting at which they got their final approval was the fifth meeting, does that mean the public has no right to appeal? Because that would be a sixth meeting? It seems really odd that that would be something that the state could declare, that the public has no right to appeal decisions based on such a strange rule. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments beyond that from the public? All right. That closes the item five, almost.
RP's long-term resident of Cronedomar. There's a lot more detail here than I'm able to comprehend, but on face value, it appears that what you've recommended in item four that was proposed for tonight seems to be in direct conflict with this new state mandate, and would ask you to remove the item from your consideration, item four.
Too late.
Because it doesn't seem to qualify under the new state mandate.
I think they pulled a permit a couple of years ago. They got it approved in 2015 or 16.
Well, maybe I'm not making myself clear. I'm, I'm in the RM zoning, and the changes proposed, I've been a victim of the city changes previously. I don't want to go through it again. And in fact, I would propose to this commission and to staff that you revisit the unfair taking that you did back in the 80s, when you changed C3 zoning to the MFR zoning, and reduced the buildable area, and put major restrictions on the commercial residential zoning, not commercial, but higher-density zoning, and took away value that was, I guess, designed to limit buildable units within the city, because that was the ultimate effect. I had permits issued in Cronedomar for three units. After the MFR was in place, I could only build two units. I had permits in hand, and the coastal commission shut it down, but the city's position was that it was buildable for three units. And after you changed the zoning, it went to two units. And the original zoning, the C3 zoning, seems to be more in keeping with what the state is proposing now, in order to generate more affordable housing, if not affordable, at least more rental units within the city, which is what the intent of the C3-type zoning was. Now you're going after that, putting limitations on it. The elephant in the room is not RM zoning, it's the R2 zoning. So if you want to go after and attack a zoning issue and overdevelopment, look at R2, not the RM zoning. I think you're misplaced.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other comments from the audience, we will go on to the staff and commissioner items.
Jim brought up about charter cities. I know that Huntington Beach just lost a case in reference to the charter cities and some of these things kind of being pushed on the cities, and I think they lost it at the appeals level. I don't know if they're going to appeal it to the California Supreme Court, but how does that, these laws affect charter cities? I guess the same way, because we wouldn't be talking about this if it didn't.
Sure. The same question was raised at the council meeting previously, and the state, the legislature in case, port law, case law, just to be completely candid, has continued to erode home rule authority for charter cities. So the legislature has declared housing a matter of statewide concern, declared this housing crisis. That's certainly something that we will analyze and evaluate. There is one case that came out, a trial court decision that came out and ruled that home rule authority did reign supreme over the Housing Accountability Act, but a lot of the cases that are out there don't weigh very well in our favor on that issue.
All right. Back to the agenda. Motion's for reconsideration. Seeing none, moving along. Community Development Director's report.
Thank you, Chair Ketting, and happy new year to all of you and the commissioners. You know, a lot of discussion tonight, as you've heard and we've presented before you as, you know, regarding the RENA numbers. We have a really busy year from a staff standpoint, going forward and working on our housing element, and focusing on updating our general plan to accommodate the housing units, and trying to implement some of these rules and laws. And we are going to create a cheat sheet and guidelines for the community. We're just, you know, we're digesting everything ourselves, too. But we've shared a lot with you this evening. A couple items going forward. The city council's going to have a special hearing on Saturday morning. This is their annual planning session, so it'll be in the city council chambers here Saturday morning at 9:00 AM from 9:00 to 12:00. And on the agenda, we'll be talking about what's coming up for this year going forward. You know, we're talking about a lot of fiscal issues, and a lot of departments are going to talk about some of their goals that they have planned for the coming year. For the community development department, you know, we have had a city council direction. We've adopted an action plan, and we're implementing that action plan with regards to housing. A couple items is that, you know, we're reviewing SB 50. We've sent out an opposition letter to the state legislators. We are trying to, we went out to an RFP to get a housing element consultant, and we need to focus on our housing element going forward. The city council is planning on disbanding the general plan steering committee, and they're forming a housing element advisory committee. This is going to be a 10-member committee that's going to provide guidance to staff and policy decisions on our new housing element. So this is a kind of a new committee that's going to be formed and going forward. We talked about the Saturday morning special meeting, and then Tuesday is the regular city council meeting. We're going to have our beach cottage preservation ordinance on that agenda, and let's see what else we have on the agenda. And the city council will be voting on a resolution with regards to the RENA numbers. A lot of cities have adopted resolutions opposing the RENA numbers and disagreeing with the SCAGS methodology. Our next planning commission hearing will be in February 20th. Our February 6 meeting is canceled, but February 20th, we're going to be having our planning commission hearing. It's going to be, it's going to be a busy night. We're going to talk about the ADU amendments, we're going to present that to the planning commission. We also going to talk about the third story massing and the RM zone amendments, as the gentleman earlier talked about on item number four that was continued, and that'll be, hopefully we'll be ready for February 20th, and we're still spending some more time on that. And that's all I have.
All right, the chair has a couple of questions. I noticed in the Business Journal, Kishovens Landing Site was sold. Is that, here's the article, is that the property that we're somewhat looking at along Coast Highway now in the coast? Is that the landowner that owns a lot of that, or is this a different one?
Yeah, we're not familiar with it, but again, with regards to Newport Village, I don't think that applies to the Newport Village project.
All right. So that doesn't affect that one. That's, I think that is it, for me. Any other commissioners have any questions about a project in town they saw? Any other commissioners have any questions about a project in town they saw, wonder why it's built or not built, or coming along slowly? Commissioner Clonan, you okay? All right. Request for absence. There you go. Adjournment.